I don't mean no harm.
Get back together.
We're back in?
Mm-hmm.
Are we back in?
I see you.
Glad to see you.
I know it, I know it.
You feel better?
Uh-huh, I'm back, yeah, yeah.
We're back in.
Yeah.
How you doing, Scott?
Good.
So we are in open work session now with Wycomico County Legislative Session 2023-07 for April 4th, 2023. Next item that we do have on the agenda is the proposed changes to the retirement plan for employees of Wycomico County, the Board of Education of Wycomico County Retirement Benefits, and the Personnel Manual. Number two.
Okay, number two.
Yeah. So, Good Eve, you're gonna have to let us know who you are, Mr. Giordano, when you want to participate.
Yes, I will preface, but I'll let them introduce themselves, yeah. I just figured I'd sit over here because we have a lot of people. Go ahead, if you guys want to introduce yourselves.
Go ahead, Tyler.
Tyler Downey, Smith &amp; Downey Law Firm.
Paul Wilber, County Attorney.
Don O'Hara, Director of Human Resources, Wycomico County.
Mary Downey, also from Smith &amp; Downey Law Firm.
Scott Hamilton, President of the FOP.
We also have Lee Stevens here from the FOP, and we also have Rich Weersburg representing the Sheriff's Office.
Good to see you all here, thanks very much.
Yeah. All right, good evening, County Council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am excited to bring you the new updated version of the county pension plan. The pension plan is the foundation document that is the basis for everything that we do here in the county, whether it would be the Personnel Manual, contracts, or decisions for the county moving, excuse me, moving forward. We have to take care of this before we take care of anything else. So before we really get discussing the document, I just want to preface by saying, I know that you received the document, it may have looked a little overwhelming with a lot of red marks and changes, and I want you to know that 95% of this pension document was modified and updated by the previous administration and plan administrator in a potential 2021 version that never made its way in front of council. So for the past three to four weeks, we have meticulously been going through the document composed by Smith &amp; Downey, the plan administrator and I have also met with and have had several conversations with the pension attorneys, FOP attorneys, FOP president, the sheriff, and the administration, and even employees, to ensure success, alignment, and agreeance. The only three changes that this current administration has made are first and foremost adhering to Judge Jackson's ruling, as well as the decision that was made by this council for Bowers &amp; Workman case per the settlement. We also now will recognize up to five years of military time for any employee, but even more importantly, we have finalized the correct drop verbiage, not only in the pension plan, but also in the Personnel Manual which you have in front of you. So before I turn it over to the panel, are all council members in full of understanding of the drop option for sworn personnel, does everybody understand drop?
Can you just explain that?
Yeah, I can break it to you, yeah. So the drop was a negotiated item for our sworn personnel with the Sheriff's Office. So in order to enter the drop, one must be 55 years of age, or have reached 25 years of service in their career with the county, or at least have 20 years of experience in their career with the county with up to five years of military time. If one of these credentials is met and the sworn personnel enters the drop, they are what we call pre-retired. And so this means they still work, they earn a paycheck, but they are no longer contributing to the county pension or the accidental disability account. So while they are earning their paycheck, their monthly retirement payout is being held in like a savings account, so to speak, gaining 4% interest. Once they fully retire, they will have access to that retirement money. So for example, I enter the drop January 1st, and for easy numbers, I earn $1,000 per month in my pension, I work 10 more months, and then I retire, I would get $10,400 from my pension drop account, and then I would go continue on with the pension. So circling back, all of this language has been updated based on the decisions made by this county council and language clarifications, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to this panel if you all have any questions.
If we could, and I agree, this is part of a 2000, a lot of what is in this actual Chapter 17, the red line version, yes, you're correct. It is what a committee, Matt Kramer and Sharon Nemours, I think maybe Wayne Strausberg, had reviewed it very carefully, and they presented, actually presented, I believe, in 2014. And in what you have presented, it appears there's maybe one or two changes that are different that are rather, not even that, they're not incidental, yes. So, yeah, I see this as not a real big issue. I guess my one concern might be is whether or not, because it is a Personnel Manual, whether this might require us to actually have, because this is what was done before, actually have a website opened up for the individuals, for the retirees, and for the employees, so that they can anonymously, or not anonymously, however they choose, but they can give their input as how they feel this may impact them and have their questions resolved. And since it's a work session, I'd like to, since we're not going to make any specific decisions on all of this right now, I agree that a lot of this, I concur with how it's been laid out, I just think that there may be a need to have public input, you'd be surprised what your employees come up with.
Hey, they saved us because there was a slight change, there was an and, an or, that really made a huge difference, and we were able to fix that, so I know that new version got sent out to you, and that was in the eyes of, I blame Smith &amp; Downey though, it wasn't our fault. They're willing to take the blame, sorry.
You still showed up.
No, you're gonna be here to take that, but no, it was actually kinda great because the employees, and actually Wayne Strausberg called and said, "What are you doing?" And I said, "Oh, I'm not doing that," so you're all right, yeah, absolutely.
So, and again, I think that, and I'm only speaking for myself, I don't know what other members might have, you might have questions as well as Personnel Manual, how it was presented in this particular section, and we're only talking about this one section as of right now that you're looking to amend?
Correct, the rest is under being written from start to finish, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions in regard to that? Yes, Josh?
Oh, see, I guess I'm trying to get clarity as to which, I got a lot of papers in front of me. I see the Smith &amp; Downey memo, which piece are we going off of, the red line version of this, to try to talk through?
The Chapter 17, it used to be Chapter 26.
And sticking with just 17 for the conversation.
Yes, so what we ended up doing was, because, so the pension plan, as I said, is that foundation document, so certain things, the Personnel Manual is gonna be a beast for you all to tackle, and so one thing that we wanted to show you though, this drop language is really super important, so we wanted to show that the Personnel Manual and the Pension Plan align. Everything else will kinda come in line with it, but we wanted to show you those two.
I think I'll notice a note that I made with it, at one point in time, there's no reference to dental and vision or dependence under the Health Insurance Eligibility, Section 1704, not quite sure if that was inadvertent or whether that was direct. I do recognize the fact that in quite numerous, quite numerous areas, that you have acknowledged the fact that you're looking at the retiree rate as opposed to the employee rate, which is in line with the 2021 collective bargaining agreement, I do see that.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings had asked, the memo from Smith &amp; Downey summarizes the changes that are in the red line of the pension document, so there are a lot of redlining changes in this bigger pension document, that's what the memo summarizes, are those redline changes in the pension? But going along with that is the Chapter 17 edits to the Personnel Manual.
I noticed also under Section 1705, continuous coverage, previously there was, it was a reference to the county providing a trust for catastrophic prescription calls for retirees that have prescriptions that aren't covered under the Medicare Supplemental Plan F or its equivalent, not quite sure what that meant at the time, not quite sure what it would mean now.
I'll look into it.
But somehow or other, it was removed, I just wasn't sure the, how that was determined. And in open enrollment, under B in open enrollment, it mentions the term "at the appropriate time," previously it said "within 30 days." So I thought, appropriate time, I get it, but it seems terribly vague, and, you know, I think as attorneys you might, those are the type of things that might get you in trouble if you don't make something more specific where you could make an exception later. Do you follow exactly where I am on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's under open enrollments.
Right.
I noticed also that you changed a lot of arrangements with the Department of Finance as opposed to Human Resources, wasn't quite sure, there could be some very personal issues maybe, don't know, where someone may want to be talking to HR instead of finance, so I'm not quite sure what was the reason.
It's just a matter of they're submitting payments, that's the only part that's for that, is because they don't submit their payments, we don't take any money downstairs in HR, they take it in finance, so that's the only, they don't report that to us.
And I guess, in reference to the drop program, is that something that we would put in here, would we, and did the military service call as well, is that something that we keep in here, or do we create a separate addendum for those two sections, the drop program and the Military Service Credit? I'm not...
So that won't be, so that part probably, for the military credit, would be in a different piece of the Personnel Manual, yeah. Ms. Hurley had asked for Chapter 17, just to show the drop language kind of mirrored, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, so I was actually gonna clarify the red line version that you provided, what document source are you working from? I mean, there's various versions of Personnel Manual out there, so which one are you, I mean, is it 2010 version, 2003 version?
I went from the 2010 is the one that I worked off of, but there were some modifications that I found, some different pieces and parts throughout the office that I pulled from, it was in the process, because I think there were some sessions that happened, so I kind of married those with it, and then cut out some of the, kind of, what happened was, basically in the original 2010, with I think it's 26 chapters, there's a lot of references between chapters, talking about the same subject, so we had, I took things that were talking about retirement in different chapters and put them into that, into 17, which will be the new manual chapter, because we had one page, we had one-page chapters that would mention little tiny pieces of information, and people were flipping back and forth between this huge document, trying to figure out what the real rule was, what the real policy was.
So you took various documents and kinda incorporated them into this red line version, but what was your starting document?
2010.
2010.
2010.
I don't know if council actually approved the 2010, I mean, my recollection is maybe a 2003, Mr. Wilber, do you recall when we last adopted the Personnel Manual?
Before my time, I'd have to look it up.
The 2010 that I have does have "adopted" at the bottom, it doesn't have the, that's the one that's, that has been in effect, and it does stay "adopted" at the bottom of the original document, yeah.
That should probably just verify, we have a legislative bill actually adopting that.
Okay, sure. That is the one online, and that actually was one of the big reasons that there was a big issue when we were meeting with the FOP, because the FOP and their attorneys were given the 2003 version, but they weren't given the updated 2010 version, so, yeah, we'll look at that legislative, yeah. We just, you know, at this point in time, are looking to get, you know, the new pension forward, because then we have a foundation document to be able to continue with the Personnel Manual. So this is all kind of a step-by-step, but we need to have a foundation document, so when we talk to the attorneys, this is the first thing that has to be done, is kinda laying this foundation, and then everything else can kinda be based off that.
Yeah, I read this whole thing last night, I thought it's a great foundation, I think, I think we need to move obviously to some sort of public format so that people can put in, like they say, and make a correction from and to or, and see what the public has to say, and maybe just move on from there, and, you know, if people are not happy with this, we're gonna find out pretty quick, I mean, look at what the Ward Museum just did.
Yeah, do you want, yeah, do you want the public for the pension plan, or do you want it more for the Personnel Manual, or both?
I think both, absolutely. And if they're kinda marrying each other, I mean, that would make things a lot more streamlined, because God knows, we've had personnel issues, and it just, it's a little confusing if they're not the same.
Are we okay sending a draft out to people? I mean, how do you feel about that with it being a draft? Are you, I mean, I don't know what the legality part of that is, I know in the 2021 version, there was a lot of confidential kind of things posted across it, so I don't know what this, I don't know what the...
Wouldn't you think, okay, these are gonna affect a lot of county employees? I mean, maybe this is something that we should send a letter out and say, hey, look, this is what we intend on doing, we want your public input, because we, like I said, we don't want people coming in here like they were from the Ward Museum, we want, we want a lot of good public input on this, because everybody wants this to be successful, and you have a good foundation, so if it is a good foundation, we'll find out with a letter of some sort, I don't know if that's what this council thinks.
Maybe I can have a public hearing, or like a public, you know.
You know, you could have like a, like a public form or something, just for county employees, maybe, and then, I mean, you can reach them, you're the county executive, so, yeah.
I would suggest that, a lot of people don't come to meetings, I'd suggest to have...
I was like, girl, did you just see what happened? What?
That's a controversial, something like employee, employee, I think each department, people should meet in their departments and go over the Pension Benefits, because when I read this, it was, I had my little black and white composition book, and I didn't know what drop meant, I said, "Drop what?"
That's why I wanted to explain it, yeah.
It was like it was talking double, you know, it seemed like some stuff was repeated, and I was getting confused, it don't take much to confuse me, and I think that once you get the clear copy, that we could have a meeting in each department, like the Sheriff's Department, Public Works, and that way we'd put here, and here, and share this with them, and get their input, because they might, they're on their own turf, so they may open up.
They might have more grammar issues.
Yeah, well, that was the...
They're on their own turf, they might feel more comfortable than sitting out here.
Yeah, and well, the good news is, is that I know the FOP, at least we know that section is taken care of, and that's why, you know, Captain Weersburg's here, so this section, but yeah, at our department head meeting, we can discuss that, and so we'll have them kinda go out and have people take a look, so we can take care of that 100%.
And we're doing that with the, actually with the manual as well, I sent out the 2010 for everybody to look at and offer their opinions, and the department heads have been wonderful about sending in the full document with all of their comments and their suggestions, so that's what I'm working on right now, is to get everything that they've put their input in, and then all of the legislation and all of the bills that have been passed, and making sure all of those are in, because a lot of time has passed, it's been 13 years, so that everything that's been passed since then has got to go into that, and then it would go back out again for everyone to meet and talk again.
And I would think the employees, if they're interested in their retirement benefits, getting to sign off that they, you know, you get to sign off that they went over, that where you had proof that you did contact, especially the majority of the employees, be proof that you, I would feel comfortable personally that they were included in this, when the final version comes.
Sure, sure.
Is there anything we can put in this document that says if we're going to update the pension plan, that we need to update the Personnel Manual at the same time, that way we don't have a 2010 version and then a 2020 version over here, so that they always stay parallel?
Mm-hmm, I don't know if it would go in the pension document, but that's our hope. So once we get the pension plan put through, then we're working on the Personnel Manual, we'll then bring that to you, so we're hoping honestly to have both of those things which will mirror each other for probably the first time ever, like before the end of this year.
That would be great.
So, hopefully way before that.
Yes, well, I mean fiscal year, that's July, girl, so that's coming, no, it's the season.
Mr. Mitchell? Over here.
Yes?
When you're talking about changing pension plans, Personnel manuals, how does that, how does that work when you're working under a collective bargaining agreement? Can that be, can that be done?
I think there's a real serious problem with that. I think that the, in fact, I did some, I looked in that today, and if you take a look at the code, you know, the collective bargaining agreement is a contract, and once the FOP, the sheriff, and the county, at that point as the exec, have agreed to it, you have a contract, that contract comes to the council, the council has an opportunity to say, "We'll take it as it is," and if you do that, that collective bargaining agreement under, in the Personnel Rules under 5910D and F, that overrules anything that isn't, that isn't the same as collective bargaining agreement.
But you didn't follow it, and that's why we got sued, so like we didn't follow it. We went completely against it, and so it does happen, the sheriff is getting ready to come in front of us for raises, that's against the collective bargaining agreement, so are we gonna have the same argument with Sheriff Lewis when he comes in front of you?
So if all, if all parties agreed, if they did, could we reopen the FOP contract?
Here's, I don't think so, not until...
If all parties agreed?
Well, if all parties agreed to it, sure, you can always do that, but, but the thing is, that the procedure is that it's negotiated at the exec level, and the sheriff, and FOP. When they get to an agreement, it comes to the council, who has not necessarily been part of that negotiation, the council can say that they don't agree, they won't agree to budget that much money, they won't agree to do whatever. If, if that's what happens, and then the exec doesn't accept that, it goes to arbitration, or the parties, not just exec, it goes to arbitration. That isn't what happened in this case. When this came in 2021, the council passed a resolution that, which is using the words that are in the, in the code, that they intended to fund the CBA, and they intend, and it says they specifically intended to make the, to otherwise implement, implement the CBA, and they spoke in particular about the Personnel Manual and the pension. So those things, by the combination of being a contract and the code section, see 5910F says, if, if the council approves the CBA, this is sort of paraphrasing, and there is a conflict between the CBA and the rule or regulation that's already out there somewhere, and it specifically mentioned could be the Personnel Manual, the terms of the CBA control. So in effect, if you were looking at a question where the CBA was different than what you already had in place, if it came into question, the CBA controls that, for the, for the people that are covered by the CBA. But, but what the council had done when this was first accepted was, they said, in the resolution, it said that they would, let's see if I might have it here, but, they said that they would change, make the changes necessary to, here it is, it says, "Now therefore been resolved by the county council, et cetera, it's intent to appropriate funds and otherwise implement the collective bargaining agreement attached as Exhibit A and any necessary revisions to the county Personnel Manual or the county retirement plan." So at that point, those two things are supposed to be made to match the CBA, not the other way around.
So you're saying the pension plan document trumps, or the CBA document trumps the pension plan document, is that what you're saying?
For, at least for those that are covered.
Only right now, not when we were in the middle of a lawsuit, though.
Well, we're in the middle of a lawsuit, we're in the middle of a lawsuit because there was a lot of, it was very vague, as far as the prior, not the 2021, but the prior collective bargaining agreement, so there was a lot of vague area in there, and it was left up to interpretation by a judge, but what we have here, and what we know that we have... If I could, if I could, it, I think the legal minds don't think it was all that unclear, but the 2021 says it's a clarification, it doesn't say it's a change, it says to clarify this issue, and then they said it in very plain layman's language.
And you're right, and this is what surprises me, I mean, we have two sections of the pension plan, 3.5 and 3.6, where I think it contradicts the collective bargaining agreement, and this council is trying to support the Fraternal Order of Police, and in supporting the Fraternal Order of Police, we are trying to honor the collective bargaining agreement that was signed and put into effect in 2021. And it's very, very clear, and you've addressed, in all of the, in all of the red lines and everything that's in this entire document, you've addressed number one with this physician member, you've addressed the trust subcommittee, that's been addressed, you've taken in consideration the medical advisory board and the circuit court, and you also took in the fact that they were gonna amend it to eliminating language that states or implies disability retirement, active employee rate for help, you don't have an active employee rate, you have a retiree rate, and that's really, really good, because that's what you wanted, and that's what we had been, what we went along with, and yet there's also the section that talks about the workers' compensation award, and it was very specific, it's very specific in the collective bargaining agreement, and it says, "The county shall amend the plan to clarify that any workers' compensation award arising out of the same injury or illness is subject to repayment if a disability pension is awarded," and went so far as to make a clarification that regardless of whether the compensation award is made before or after a disability payment, pension is awarded, the repayment shall be the gross amount awarded and is subject to the same actuarial analysis utilized by the county's actuary firm to determine benefits for all county employees. Now, maybe a little bit of angst about having that in there, I mean, I can maybe, I can understand that, I know it certainly will impact at least one deputy, but what, what the position we're saying, what Mr. Mitchell was trying to suggest, is that this was the agreement that was made with the FOP in Wycomico County in 2021, together with the benefits that were given to the deputies, whether it was increases, step increases, whether it was COLAs, all of that was put together as one package as a compromise to say, this is something that we can live with for three years.
May I, may I?
Can Scott really answer, since he was talking about the FOP?
If I could respond to that, yes, there is language that is very clear in the contract, however, that language is also in dispute, because some of that language was not agreed to by the parties. We, the FOP, the CBA, the CBU team was not made aware of some of that language, and that's on the record during depositions that are still ongoing, so some of this is, is still up for interpretation and clarity, and I believe that the intent of the revisions to the pension plan and inviting the FOP and the CBA to the table was to make these documents mirror the CBA. So that's what we're trying to do now, is finish what didn't happen in 2021 with this new, with this new document.
But what you are not mirroring is Section 4, that's the only one you're not mirroring, I think, and I recognize this inconsistency that's been suggested, and I know that grievances were filed in reference to this, but also from my perspective, and I'm trying to be very open and honest about this, the grievances were dismissed by the, by the commission.
What grievance was dismissed?
Well, the grievances that were filed, I think you filed a grievance, the executive filed a grievance, and you filed a grievance as the head of the FOP, and the commission dismissed both of those grievances.
Are you referring to the complaint against the attorney with the Bar Association?
Yes.
I've gotten a response back from, from the Grievance Commission, yes.
Right.
And they have their own opinion, however, our own attorney has put it on the record that the language within the contract was not agreed to by our parties.
But it was signed.
The contract that I signed, and I've said this from the outset, the contract that I signed was not the one that was published.
And you see, and that's the gray area that we're in, that's really the gray, and I don't know where we can say we can substantiate it, I just don't, I personally haven't seen where we can say that is substantiated, and I haven't seen that, I'd love to see it, but I haven't seen it.
Well, all parties, though, agree, the executive agrees, the FOP agrees, the sheriff agrees, so all parties that are part of that CBA are all on the same board.
No, no, I don't think that the individuals that are party to the 2021 collective bargaining agreement believe that it was doctored. Mr. Strausberg is not going to tell you it was doctored.
Well, I'm talking about from the executive office, the sheriff, and the FOP, that's who I can speak for.
Well, I understand, but what I'm saying is, we have, I haven't seen any, any substantial proof that says that it was doctored, and, I mean...
Well, there's two, there's two contracts.
My own attorney, my own attorney has admitted that the language that he drafted into the contract was not what was agreed to by the party, that wording itself was then modified later, after ratification. Ratification occurred, I believe, on April the 12th of 2021, the contract, the contract that was published was modified after that date, we were not privy to it, we did not agree to it. When I was forwarded, the signature page for the 2021 CBA, I was forwarded solely a signature page, I inserted my signature onto that document, I did not see the first contract until July the 5th, at approximately 3:00 PM in the afternoon, and that's the one that's been published that we've all seen, and it was only then, I believe it was in October or late September of 2021. And it was only then, I believe it was in October or late September of 2021, when we found the discrepancy. And that was the first time we'd been made aware of it. My, my own attorneys-
All right, go ahead. No, go ahead.
My own attorneys, Mike Davie, the partner of the firm, and our, our representative attorney, Karen Dowdy, both admitted FOP members, police officers are not attorneys. We cannot be expected to review every single and/or or but or shall or may or will within our contract. It was on them. They dropped the ball and they let this get through. And they've, they've conceded, so much so that they're not even charging us to try to fix it, which to get an attorney to concede, no offense, is usually not common. So I find honor in their, their admission and, and the fact that it's on the record. It's been, I've been deposed-
Excuse me, what record is that?
In the depositions. In all the depositions that were taken, the testimony was, was the same, that we were not provided that change. We did not agree to it and it occurred after the ratification.
Did your attorneys appear in deposition?
I don't know if my attorneys themselves were deposed, but I was deposed and that's the, that's, that was the state that I'm-
Saying your attorneys are on the record saying that? That would be-
You need your mic, Andy.
Our attorneys, Mike Davie and Karen Dowdy, have told both myself and the CBA chairman, who's Tom Funk, that they did not see this language and it was not approved. And it was, and it was-
And there's her documentation to that.
There's email traffic. There's email, there's emails that have been, that have been provided. And yes.
And you say been provided to whom?
And, and this is all part of an ongoing grievance as well.
Been provided to whom?
She can't be talking about this.
I'm sure it was provided to Kevin Karpinski.
I mean, and the reason I'm asking that is because you keep saying on the record, you keep saying provided, but without knowing what the record was and who you provided to, it's absolutely no help does.
There, there has been emails that have been, that have been provided-
To?
To both Mr. Karpinski's office and the FOP attorney's office. And all of that has been shared. And that was part of the basis of my complaint with the Bar Association.
I acknowledge that this information is, is in this document. However, this is, this is not good for law enforcement, in my opinion. And I, I have looked at this numerous times, done my research. It's two totally different things. You've got a disability pension and you've got a workman's compensation settlement. Two totally different things. I believe a law enforcement officer that gets hurt in the, in the line of duty and is deemed medically unfit for duty should get both. Whether it affects just one deputy now, we have a year left in this contract. This could happen to two or three deputies, God forbid, over this next year.
So-
This is a work session. And this is something that's going to have to be discussed, especially if we're going to talk about salary increases with the next budget. Because whether it's salary increases, whether it's this, it's all a violation of the FOP contract. That's why I asked the question. If all parties consented, could we reopen the FOP contract? Fix all this stuff? Get it done? Get it behind us and move on?
So may I, may I say one thing, please? Part of the impetus for making these changes was council approved the settlement with two retired employees.
But that was under a different contract.
Hold on one second. The, but the pension cannot pay the amount that is coming, the general fund currently is paying that disability payment because the pension document does not allow it. So unless we do a change to the pension document, the agreement that council approved with those two people, that will be a continual general fund budget amount going forward. Because I cannot have the pension pay for something that's not allowed by the pension document. Because Mr. Mitchell saying, well, the CBA rules. I think the IRS rules when it comes to the pension. And if we violate IRS rules associated with our pension document, our pension is in jeopardy.
I, I understand what Mr. Mitchell's saying. It is a binding legal contract between FOP and the county. I understand that. We recognize there's a problem with it. And you got a problem, you got to come up with a solution.
And-
This is a big problem for a while. It's time we address it.
And this is why we are here tonight with both parties sitting at the table.
But you're asking us to amend a pension plan that is in direct violation with the, with the fraternal, with the collective bargaining agreement.
So we could come to the council at the same time as the pension plan and do an amendment to that language?
This is a three-year contract.
The CBA has specific procedures and how you have to do it. They, they have to negotiate it. They have to bring it back to the council. The council either passes yes or no, or they can do some of both. And then it goes someplace else.
I guarantee you, if the FOP, well, I shouldn't say guarantee, strong words, the FOP president's sitting before you, I would imagine that if we wanted to clear up this language in the contract, that he would want to do it rather quickly.
Right.
I would, I would imagine the executives on this would want to do it.
This is just a work session.
Yeah, no, I understood. But my question is, I'm getting ready to bring raises per Sheriff Mike Lewis to you all. So that's against the contract. So can I not bring those raises then? Like, I mean, because these deputies have been asking about that. So if it's against the contract, I'm not, I mean, they're right here.
Well, this is why you and I months ago had a discussion about, we need to reopen the FOP contract and, and fix all this stuff and-
Yeah, I'm not even going to entertain it with him. I'm not even going to think, you know? But I, just so you know, we are at a point in time where we are losing deputies left and right because of pay. And the thing is, at the end of the day, I understand that we have vacancies throughout this county. I cannot have two deputies on the road. It's dangerous. We've had two killed and one shot. So I am not willing to put them at risk for $5,000. Okay, if that's going to keep some of them here, I'm going to do that. But as Ms. Olin said, again, this money now is being taken out of the general fund, including the settlement. We cannot pay it back until this pension language is fixed. So right now, it is on Wacomico County taxpayers to, to, to pay the settlement and pay Mike and Sam. So, you know, we're trying our, our very best. And when we have all parties here that agree to say, this is what's messed up, we're trying to fix this. I am trying to keep the county out of another lawsuit that is literally waiting on my desk, waiting on the desk. Okay, I'm trying to avoid that. Okay, in doing so, we have already racked up $17,000 in legal fees to fix this. I don't want to cost the taxpayers anymore.
I guess the only question is, how is a collective bargaining agreement worth the paper it's written on? If you're going to amend it the next year or the next year after that? We do that in the budget.
An amendment to our contract is, is, is one thing, but we're, I think you and I are focused on this specific language that's in paragraph, I believe it's 4.1. And that language has been in dispute since a few months after the contract was published. And we've been trying to work through that process, not so speedy, as we're in the second year of a grievance. But the circuit court judge also kind of, in my opinion, almost agreed with what we were trying to accomplish. And that is that the language was in dispute and it needs to be clarified. And we've all had conversations, some of you privately I've had conversations with about the fact that this is an issue and we want to get this fixed. And the problem is, this ongoing matter is preventing us from redoing the contract. So yeah, I, I agree that amendments should occur from time to time when you, when you realize that the parties didn't agree to it.
You know, Scott, I also, and I have to play the devil's advocate because I care for the life of me, imagine why Kevin Karpinski, who's, who's, he's, he's a very reputable attorney in the state of Maryland, probably across, throughout the East Coast. Why would he go into a document that had already been agreed upon and tweak it and then give it back to you? What's his motive? What's his incentive?
I don't know the answers to that question, but it, but it happened.
And I have an email trail from Kevin Karpinski to Jackie Curry that literally says, now this is more of a personnel matter, which is not really counsel, but it said, they, I got them to sign the contract, go change the pension plan. So that goes to show that the 2015 version does not mirror. That's what's currently in place right now. The 2021, when Smith and Downey gave their opinion to all of us when we had it in that book, we got it that morning, that was the 2021 version that had never gone in front of counsel at all. So the changes from, like, the changes to mirror the 2021 FOP would have gone into the new pension, but it never got brought in front of counsel.
But Jackie had followed, if Jackie Curry had followed through with what Mr. Karpinski said, then it would, everything would have been taken care of. But that doesn't, that doesn't suggest that Mr. Karpinski did something afoul.
Well, when he says, I got him to sign it?
Yes. I mean, that's part of negotiations.
Well, you know, he had-
What are you interpreting that as?
And had, and was contacting the senator, Senator Van Holland, when he's on active duty to get him deposed on a civil case.
So regardless, regardless of how the language got there, it's there. We've got to deal with it. It needs to be removed. It's not good for, it's not good for our sheriff's office. Deputies get hurt between now and when this contract expires, they're going to be facing the same thing. We need to reopen the contract. The way I see it, it's not, not my contract, it's your, it's the FOP's contract with the county executive's office. It needs to be reopened. It needs to be fixed. We need to deal with it. It's the big elephant in the room that everybody knows about. And it's got to be dealt with, especially if we're going to talk about raises coming up. Because if, if we can't entertain things because of this contract, then two months from now, we're not going to be able to entertain things because of this legal binding contract. So open it up and we can have all the discussions that we need to have, clean this up and, and push forward.
And this, this, this isn't out of line with LEOPS. I mean, this isn't something crazy that they're wanting to amend. This is something that even LEOPS has and, and-
Actually, I don't think so. LEOPS doesn't, LEOPS does not allow you to do this.
In some cases-
Actually, I do believe the language.
No, I think it does.
And it's Maryland pension law as well. So yes, we're the only, we are the anomaly.
There are some differences.
Excuse me?
Plus, the other thing is too, is if we're really-
You can ask Mr. Wilber. The Maryland, the general Maryland law is-
Mr. Mitchell, can you use the mic?
The Maryland, the general Maryland law is what is in the 2001 agreement as far as getting both workers' comp and the accidental. We're not the outlier if we, if you stay with the CBA. The outlier is doing the opposite.
Well, I think my concern is, is that we are trying to dictate what happens to a settlement agreement, and I agree with Councilman Baker, the settlement is separate. And if they were to retire normally, they would not have to pay a cent back. So why is it because they get the accidental disability of, of an account that they pay for? We don't pay it. We don't contribute to it. They do. It's their account. It's literally a separate account in finance that has $1.9 million in it that the deputies pay into. The county, the county has no, no part of it whatsoever. So 50% of this accidental disability comes out of their regular pension and 16 and 2/3% comes out of this separate account. We have no right to say that they can't, that like, that we have to pay it back or have it offset or anything like that. It's their own account.
If that's the case, then I would think Mr. Downey could figure out a way that the pension could take that into account.
He did. He wrote it. It's right in here. Like, he literally did that.
Use your mic, use your mic.
Sorry. No, he did do that. He literally mirrored exactly, he mirrored the decision made by Judge Jackson and he mirrored the decision that was made in this, these council chambers by these people.
No, but that's, that's not what I'm speaking of. What you're saying is it's their money, that the council's not putting the money in there. It's the FOP's money. And that, that what I'm saying is, if that's the correct situation, then that's not coming out of the pension. So there should be some way to pay them, not out of the general fund.
It's, it is a, it's a disability pension and it is managed by ETNA. And so ETNA is the payee or payer, sorry. And our pension investment company, Mason, I'm blanking on names at the moment, but they are our advisor and they advise us on our OPEB and pension, our pension and this. And there is, there is a member from the FOP that sits on the investment advisory committee associated with this. Yes, there is money there, but it is part of the actuarial calculation that happens for our pension.
Mr. Wilber, I have a question for you, if I could. When the 2021 negotiations were taking place, I, I'd have to assume that, was it not be documented? Was it not documented? Was there not someone that was taking minutes? People taking notes and referencing what was being discussed?
There were no minutes being taken. There are emails between the attorneys.
So in regard to that, is there information there that specifically says that the FOP did not want this statement in part of the FOP agreement? Or does it, does it show that they actually, this is what they did want in that agreement?
The, I can't speak to, as Mr. Hamilton has said, I can't speak to what was said between the FOP attorney and the FOP. The county side was not part of that. I can speak to what occurred on the county side of that negotiation. Okay?
Just trying to get some clarification.
I can provide the council, anybody, with the emails that related to those negotiations.
Well, anything relevant to this section, I think, would be important.
Yeah, sure. You're talking about the Appendix C.
Appendix C.
Item four, the Appendix C.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, I'd love for, I mean, I would love for there to be a statement saying, we don't want this, but it's there.
I, I can dig out the emails that relate to that, yes.
So was there any, I mean, you, you were involved in this?
Right.
When, I guess Bob was there, right? Wayne?
Right. Bob and Wayne.
Was there any attempt to ever say, we're going to change this? We're going to make this different than what the FOP thinks we're getting? And do you ever hear that?
Well, the-
I can't understand why, I mean, negotiating in good faith between the two parties and, you know, that would have, that would have happened. I just can't.
I think there's, there's two levels operating here. One is what was being said between the FOP attorneys and the FOP. I don't know what was being said. I think Mr. Hamilton has made some explanation of that. What was said in the negotiations and what was said in emails primarily between the county attorney, Mr. Karpinski, and the FOP attorney, Mr. Dowdy, there's emails, and I will be glad to provide them to everybody about this Appendix C, Section 4.
Yes, sir, thank you. The FOP, and I say FOP collectively with the CBA team or the CBU members, so sheriff's deputies met sometime, and I believe it was April the 12th. And the, the, the team that was on that negotiations committee, I believe it was six of us. And we all had a agreement as to what we were going to present on that evening. That was presented and it was ratified based on that agreement. There was a summary email that was, that was sent to Mr. Karpinski on May the 28th that says that revise the plan language to permit the county to receive repayment for any future lost wages in a comp award. As so as, so long as the comp award is related to the same injury or illness that leads to, or that led to the award of an LOD disability pension. Our belief of that was to, if, if the county overpaid or made a payment in salary at the same time as a workman's compensation benefit for salary, if those payments were made at the same time, we believed what that meant was that the county would be reimbursed. It had nothing to do with a workman's compensation settlement. Line two of the same paragraph says, clarify that only the amount in line one that can be recovered, i.e. no interest is charged to the repayment amount. That is the document that we agreed to. The return or the, in that language was used to draft Section 4 of Appendix C. Our attorneys again have stipulated and agreed that they did, that they erred when they said before and after. My own attorney, Karen Dowdy, said that. However, that was changed again. And specifically, Kevin Karpinski inserted that we will repay workman's compensation with interest. And that has also been documented by email. And it's in the current CBA that's been published. So yes, we state that there was a change made, not a clarification, a change. And that has been in dispute since October of 2021. So that is- So that is the only document that I could provide to you at this time. And, and to answer your question, no, there was no minutes, there was no stenographer, and we asked to, for no offense, when a stenographer is at the next negotiations. Because I think that it's important that we preserve an accurate record to avoid this in the future.
And I completely agree with that.
Mr. Wilber, can you touch, it's been a couple months, when we talked last time about whether it's lawful or legal for, for a law enforcement officer to get both. Didn't you say that that could be our option, or it's not a law? I'm trying to remember what you said.
Are you, are you talking about the workers' comp offset?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, the way that I understand it is, it could be handled either way. You know, there can be an offset, or it can not be an offset.
Right.
And I think.
So it wouldn't be illegal to do it that way?
Right. And I'd ask Mr. Downey, is he, do you agree with that?
I do, yeah.
Yeah.
Because my main role is to make sure the plan reflects whatever the intent of the parties has been, and, and so that's how we drafted it. And, and we drafted the 2021 version, thinking it had been adopted. We had written an opinion based on that language, thinking that had been adopted, and then realized there was dispute in litigation that we realized, that we understood had been settled, and was not going to be appealed, which led to this rewrite of Section 3.6 to reflect what we thought the terms of that agreement, that settlement agreement were. So that the, because as Ms. Giordano said, that the, my main concern is that the plan operates according to its terms. Yes, it needs to be consistent with the collective bargaining agreement, which is a lot of the changes that we put into this red line pension are to incorporate the changes that were brought in by the most recent collective bargaining agreement, but also then to clarify Section, or to rewrite Section 3.6 to reflect what we thought the intent of the parties at this time was. And because the plan cannot pay something that is not authorized under the terms of the pension plan, simply because the IRS could come in and challenge the plan not operating according to its terms, and then disqualify the plan. And that's what we're trying to avoid as pension lawyers. I'm not a labor lawyer, I don't, you know, the FOP and the contract, I agree that, that they all ought to be consistent. We thought we were making this consistent with this change, based on the understanding of, of where we were on this process of this interpretation of, of the FOP agreement.
So as attorneys, and we've got three sitting here, do you feel, or, or, do you feel that all this should be done if we're going to make change simultaneously? Or, like, does the FOP contract need to be relooked at because there's these issues?
Well, and that's the question of interpretation of that, I think it does make sense. And again, I'm not a labor lawyer, but I think based on what Mr. Mitchell is saying, yes, that may be step one, or altogether, do it, make it so the FOP agreement is, is corrected, if it needs correcting, the pension reflects what that agreement says, and then the personnel manual reflects the same thing.
And the county code.
Yes.
That, that all has to be consistent.
But I do think.
We want to do this right.
From my perspective, it can all be done at the same time, but I'm not sitting on the council. And so I, I don't know, from your perspective, if that can all be accomplished at the same time, but legally, I think it can all be accomplished at the same time.
So Paul, I'm going to ask you the same question that Shane just asked Mr. Downey, is, do you think that it would be wise to open this back up and negotiate and make sure everything's on the same page?
What, I'd say it this way, if you're going to go forward with the pension changes that are before you, then we've got to get the CBA and the county code all lined up in that position. And that's going to require the CBA to be reopened.
And if you want the payments from the settlement that you agreed to, to come from the pension, all of those things need to happen. If we want to continue to pay them from the general fund, then we don't make these changes. But if we want them to come from the pension plan, these changes that are being discussed tonight, all of them, as Mr. Wilber just mentioned, need to occur.
If the funds for the FOP were to run dry, is the county then responsible?
The, I believe the document states that the FOP has to kick in more.
And we don't really think, so they're only responsible for 16 and 2/3%. So 50%, so if somebody goes out on accidental disability, 50% comes out of the pension like it normally would, because they've contributed their entire time. And then only 16 and 2/3% comes out of that FOP, and they're sitting right now at 1.9, so.
When you say document, are you referring to the pension document says that?
So that is the, that's the other piece that we need to make sure gets added to, we want to actually put that in the documents.
So it's not there now?
Well, it's actually per our attorneys, that's a personnel situation, but Pam would rather it be in the document as well. So it's, it's, it's a personnel matter, but she wants it.
What's the term you said, memorialized?
Yes.
Memorialized in the pension document.
I would prefer, because 10 years from now, how many of the same parties are going to be sitting here at the table? Let's make sure the document, the documents reflect the decisions that we are making. Instead of the, I mean, I was not part of the original documentation that created the 16 and the 50, but it makes sense, because they have paid into the 50, so why should, why should 100% of their pension come from the disability side when they have paid into the other side as well? So putting that all together in this documentation, again, clarifies and allows the changes that council agreed to in the settlement, start to come from the pension versus the general fund.
And just one last thing, I want to apologize, because had I had known all three of these things should have happened at once, I would have brought all three things to you and not, not necessarily, because this is not a waste of time, it's a really good discussion, but when we bring this forward, do you want to piecemeal this, where the pension goes first, and then the CBA, and then the personnel? Or would you like all three things aligned? And I'm good with either one, but you got, you, you know, do you want the CBA with this? Or, like, how, how would you like it presented to you?
The question I have is, how are we going to maintain the integrity of the CBA from here on out, if it can be changed every year, or every, every other year?
I mean, if, if, if you came to us with a, with a request for a change, I think we'd have to be open to, to working together, as I've stated many times. I think it's important that we continue to work together. And I don't think it attacks the validity of the document by willing, the willingness to compromise mid-cycle. This is a three-year, this was, this was a three-year contract, and that three-year contract was only agreed upon to assist the new council and the new county executive with not having to start negotiations in the middle of your first, first year in office. However, I remind you that the, our contracts do take some time to negotiate, and we're talking July of 2024. So that's next year. So we're on the cusp of starting negotiations now. And there's no way that if we started tomorrow, that we could have something done by July the 1st of this year anyway. So we have to now discuss, are we going to, are we going to start something that doesn't marry with the fiscal year, or how is that going to work? So we have to be able to work together and make changes. And I don't think it's, I don't think it de-credits or, or takes any of the value of the document away.
It doesn't, because all parties got to agree.
And.
If one party says, I'm not doing it.
And I sit here before you, with members behind me, that agree that we want to fix this now. We've been wanting to fix this since October of last year. Thank you, Siri. So, somebody's Siri. So, yes, we want to, to do this now and get it over with. And, and I, I spoke to several of you out on the campaign trail, that this is important to us, to get this fixed now. And, and knowing that this is wrong, that we didn't agree to it, it, in our minds, it nullifies it. And, and at what point do we say, this contract isn't worth anything? But it's all we have, and it's tied up in a courtroom or in a grievance, and we can't move forward. And that's been the, the biggest struggle with the entire process, is we're stuck in this position, and we can't, we're spinning our tires the entire time.